So in addition to the selectmen, the budget committee members on there, if you can't see them on your screen, I can only see one at a time. So you got Janine Sherman, Lucy McCarthy, Margaret Quahley and Bill Alcorn. We'll have at least one other staff member with Matt Jablonski, the Island Fellows also with us. So with that, I just a quick try to lay out just kind of, I know this is trying to do a lot in three hours and these three different kind of presentation meetings. But my hope is that we kind of stay a little bit higher level, just get an opportunity for the departments to present their goals and kind of overall that budget summary for the department. Just to kind of get out there, you know, some of those big items, you know, for you all to hear at the same time. If there's a couple of quick reactions or questions about the goals and the things that are trying to be accomplished that are set out, we can cover those during these three meetings. You know, and then my hope was that it would leave the remainder of the budget review process to get into the weeds within those department pages and on each, each on those lines. So I'm hoping that that could work this year for us and try and get the departments in and out of here. And then if we need to call any one of them back for more questions, we could do that. Or I can follow up in between and get the information back to you. But hopefully with that, we'd be able to move through in these periods of these three hour sections and perhaps in some cases, maybe even faster than we anticipated. So with that, I just want to kind of go over, I think we've been in enough meetings by now. To, if you're not talking, if we could just keep muted, there's a couple on the phone. So if you're on the phone, you just hit star six to come off or unmute. And just ask that, it shouldn't be a problem, but if we could make sure folks have shared some shared airtime, that would be ideal. So that few minutes.
Yeah. I'm wondering if anybody else is hearing you garbled or if it's my, my computer. It just sounds like you're in a well and it's the words are running together. Does it sound okay to everybody else?
I can, I can hear Andy okay.
Yeah, it's a combination of the mask and the distance from the microphone, probably. I'll try to do better.
Yeah, it's probably the mask that's doing it. I don't know, but. Sorry, I just, just thought maybe it was mine. I've had a lot of speaker problems, but. Okay.
All right. So just a quick, so one thing that we've been trying to work on and one of the big things Matt's been helping us work on is trying to integrate our, the select board strategic plan into the budget process and to kind of show the goals and the budget process, you know, how they're connected or the things that the departments do, how they're connected to the board's goals. And so this process started, what was it over, well over a year ago. So last year's budget process, when we were setting out for what we're in right now. We, the board hadn't finalized and kind of approved its strategic plan. So through a grant, Gabe was able to help walk the board through that process. These two images here are just kind of screenshots of the two workshops they had. And then through a series of a couple of selectmen's meetings, and with Matt's help, pulled together this kind of one pager, kind of showing the boards, you know, the mission they set out to accomplish the values and the focus areas. So with that, we tried to this budget process, do something a little bit different. The goals worksheets looked a little bit different and we added a few more columns. So we're, we're trying this year to, for, you know, where we could show where some of those items on those goals worksheets tied back into this board's strategic plan. You know, going forward, the hope is that, you know, we take that one page that you just saw that is ours and kind of are able to kind of see a little bit more robust one that looks like this. This is not ours. But it's an example of on the bottom left, that graphic kind of being the same thing that you've just seen into the right there, it shows ways we're going to measure those items. The things that we're looking to accomplish, how do we measure it to show the community, the budget committee, the selectmen, how we're doing, or how are we going to track this, setting some targets out there. You know, and those examples there, the, the one on the top there, the livability satisfaction, that community was measuring that and they wanted to see 90% or higher that year. And to do that, they set out to see some green space programming, some new business startup programs, et cetera. So our hope is that we're able to kind of do something similar and do a better job, you know, showing what, what it is or why we're doing what we're doing in a way that the community can see that. And the hope is that the, the annual reports can kind of start to show that. So the community can clearly see what's being done with their money and again, in a very different way than we're used to putting it out there. But we're hoping that it's meaningful and coherent and able to see easily what, what's being accomplished. Here's an example of one community's report, their annual report or their kind of follow-up document. Setting out the, the frequency in which we would look to update this and provide this could be quarterly. It could be monthly or it could be annual. You know, but again, on that left side of the screen, it kind of sets out that department or, you know, from the, the board's strategic plan, the overall goal of providing a safe, clean and well-maintained infrastructure, the objectives, the things they want to set out to do to, to show that they're going to get there. And then kind of in the middle or to the right there, it shows some, some measurables. How many lane miles they have, the scores of those lane miles. You know, an example of a dollar figure of the planned improvements. And so this is, and then again, back on that left side of the screen, towards the bottom, you see those icons and that community chose to use those icons to show how this goal aligns with different parts of that community's overall vision. So, you know, some of, a lot of this is something I've picked up through some classes I've been taking over the last few years. You know, in a large part, again, of what Matt's been helping us try to work and integrate through the departments. Again, it is a little different, but hopefully that we see the value in being able to connect those in a way that again, shows the community a little bit different perspective of how we're, how and what we're doing. Anyone want me to, any questions on that? Any thoughts or feedback? All right. So with that, the, the goals worksheets that we had created, they're again, quite similar to what you had seen. But we did add some other columns, that board value focus area, added, you know, anticipated timeline start, like when, what quarter of the fiscal year were we hoping to at least start these projects? The estimated cost, if there's a cost associated with that. And then this KPI, the key performance indicator, you know, being able to tie, again, tie that back to. So how are we going to measure that goal or this thing that we're setting out to do? Another thing we've been talking about is trying to track time on certain things to be able to show. So, you know, if we wanted to start a new committee or a new project that's kind of outside of, you know, the business as usual, you know, starting to run into, you know, how do we make sure we have time to do this? You know, making sure we're setting out realistic goals to accomplish certain things. You know, we saw the value in putting time on, on some of these projects just to show, you know, what do we spend doing this task or, you know, maybe something else. I could think like public works is a good example of, you know, how many hours did we spend this year maintaining the, the roads for winter, you know, salt, sand plowing, you know, versus how many hours did we spend doing routine maintenance? We have a program that can track all of that. You know, we could start to look at things a little bit differently and perhaps, you know, ask different questions and get down into the, the heart of why we do what we do and we make changes. Try to get away from the, the quick reaction on dollar amount, but rather work to be accomplished. So that's the hope. That's what we've tried to do this year and try to integrate some of this. We're continuing to finesse and get the departments on board and kind of show them how they can identify the KPIs or what they're going to be measuring to then report back. All right, with that, the numbers, I just put on a quick page view here, all of the, all of the, the tabs, if you will, in your budget book. And just kind of shows quickly how it compares to the last few years of actuals, this current fiscal year's budgeted amount. And what's being proposed through my column for next year. You see quickly the, the ones that are down by the ones in red. The increases, you know, overall on expenditures is up 219,000 as proposed. As we go through the budget book, you'll see on the summary page, I tried to add the revenue. So we can see where, where money would be coming from to pay for some of these things. You know, in addition to that, that overall summary sheet, that allocation sheet that's in the front. You know, so just kind of going through this quickly, you can see some of the bigger ones. You know, there's a couple that hover around $20,000 increase, the admin line, the professional services, town property, law enforcement up 41% is presented. See, the other big ones, capital reserves up about 49,000 as presented. And then the, towards the bottom there, the planning and community development increase of 30,000 and debt service of 46,000. So with all of those, my, again, my hope is that we're able to kind of go through and just do a quick focus more on that goals worksheet, hear what the departments are thinking. See what, you'll see what some of these bigger amounts might be. You know, but then to spend additional meetings, you know, once we get through these three presentations to focus more on the details and to think about, well, did we think about this and did you run a number on that way? But again, in an effort to kind of help the departments move through and get you all at the same time, the same information. So with that, the selectmen salaries or tab is the first one we come to. I didn't hear them ask for an increase, so that's stays the same. That's a, a line item that comes from fund balance. Eric's clarifying that that's per selectmen and I think in the past it, it has not been per selectmen. It's been 600 per selectmen. Again, it's been a while since I've looked at or gotten numbers on or shared those numbers, but it does range across the state depending on the size of the town, the role of the boards. You know, but an amount that presented the same as it was last year. All right, the admin budget, that one, as we mentioned on that summary page, up about $20,000 overall. A big part of that can be attributed to this clear gov, that first goal there or, or budget item. The clear gov's a software that if anyone joined the selectmen's meeting a couple of meetings ago, you know, we had a quite, quite a long discussion and presentation on what the program is. Some of this you might recall was talked about and presented last year's budget. Due to COVID and the uncertainty of where things were headed last year, I suggested that we, we cut it and wait a year. I think during that time and making that decision, we had also added Matt. So I'm glad that we did wait a year. So Matt's going to be able to work with us in this program to help, help implement that. You know, if we tried to take that on this year, we probably wouldn't have done as well of a job as we're going to be able to do. So for right now, the board authorized us to sign on for a prorated year. And so we're going to spend the next couple of months getting the data into the system and building the backend of it. And it'll allow us to hit the ground running with July 1st and the new budget to start tracking some of this stuff. You know, it's a great budgeting tool and digital workbook, which will save, you know, fair, quite a lot of time in just formatting and creating these, these budget books. It'll have a lot more capability and forecasting and showing you, you know, in a very more interactive way. Where we've been, you know, where it's forecasted ahead, different departments, different line items. Has a great function of building out a capital improvement plans, the financial parts of that. And then the other part in connecting the KPIs, the goals, the strategic plan, you know, there's a really great in, front-facing insights tool. You know, and that's one that we'll be able to have a link from our website to that. And again, show you better how the budget's connecting to some of those, some of those goals and strategies we've set out to accomplish. It does come with a, a big price tag, but we're hopeful that it'll be a powerful and useful tool. After this first full year, if it goes through as, as proposed, the 10,600 includes some discounts for being the first town in, I don't think it's in Maine right now, I think about in the county at least. And there's a bundled discount as well. So the, the following years, we signed on for a five-year agreement to lock in the price for five years. There is a clause in that agreement that allows, you know, they understand town funding and budgets. And if it's not approved in an ensuing year, you know, we're not obligated to, to have to pay that. You know, the hope is that we'll at least get one year to prove its value. You know, and show you for next budget year, you know, how that budget book process works, how the insight tool is working. And we can kind of go from there going forward, but a lot of hope for that program and, you know, and how that can improve our budgeting process and how we share with the community what's going on. Any questions on, on that one?
Yeah, I did, in the notes column, the fiscal years 23 through 26, is that an increase in cost? From the 10,600?
It is. So that 10,600 reflects discounts that wouldn't be available to us in the following years.
Okay.
There's right now a bundled discount, which presumably would be. But there was that kind of first time or, or, you know, they're really, last year when we talked to them, there was no town in me. And I get the impression now there might be another town, but they offered a first Knox County town rate, I think it was.
Okay.
You know, so that was an additional discount that we wouldn't be afforded the following years.
But that, that 12,700, that would be the, the price for those remaining fiscal years, is that correct?
Yeah, and that'd be the annual fee for each, each of those years.
And that, that can't go up?
Yeah. So by locking in on a five year, we had a three or a five, or we could do it by, by the year. And so I think the, there was a fixed increase, oh Matt, if you remember, I want to say it was like the 3% or so. It's between three and seven, I can't remember.
I think I remember four.
Four, okay.
That's, I, but yeah, somewhere, you're definitely right in that ballpark.
Yeah. So I mean, to me, it did seem like a no-brainer if, if you could avoid the increase for five years. To lock in the five, five-year price.
I agree. That's, that, that's the way to go. We've locked in a price at that. And yeah, I'd, I'd like to see the, I'd like to see it after next year and see what, you know, what kind of gains we get from it if speeds up the budgeting process. You know, opens up people to do other things because they don't have to spend as much time on that. You know, I, I think it's worthwhile. I just wanted to confirm that. So thank you.
Sure. Any other questions on that software and what our hopes are for it?
Yeah, it looks to me, Andy, like, like the price goes to 12,710 per year through 26.
That's correct. Next, next fiscal year, there'd still be a, a discount applied to, it'd be $10,600 for next fiscal year. After next fiscal year, we don't have some of those same discounts applied for kind of a first-time sign-on. So that jumps to 12,710. The price for next year is 12,710. But there is a discount still being applied. They split it between this year and, and next year. And again, if, if there's ever a year going forward where, you know, it's not supported in the budget, you know, there is a clause to be able to step out of that contract. All right. Continuing to work with departments on developing their KPIs or again, key performance indicators. That's something that we're continuing to strive to do. It'll take a few staff meetings and or department head meetings. You know, be able to continue to create those. Matt will continue to work with, with me and the departments on, on helping flush those out. So I don't, there's no additional cost to that. It's just something that was just staff time being devoted to that. Also in there is the continued interest in digitizing some of our records. New this year is the road survey. That's a document that does get referred to quite often at times. Dell created that for us. Dell Webster created that back in, I think the late seventies or early eighties. And it documents handwritten, documents all, all the town roads that had been accepted by the, by the town. Going back into the 1800s, it lays out. He went and copied and handwrote all the places where a town meeting had accepted it or, or discontinued it. If there's a known right of way that was captured in there, he drew a big map, a map that we can't fit into a copier. It's like a three-by-four map. So the hope is that I'd like to see that digitized. So it's not something that's continuing to fall apart. It's the only copy we have. And again, very useful document. Yumei Machias has a GIS lab and just had one quick conversation with the person in charge of that. And wasn't even looking for this as a project, but she said, our class does do projects. You know, what kind? And she kind of shared some examples and I said, well, I got this road survey. That would be great to get, get into a digital form. So it's something I think that you probably work with them. They have a very reasonable rate to be able to accomplish that. It's a very achievable project in a semester's time. So that's a new one-year cost that I'm hoping we could see get done. So the kind of overall high view changes here, you can see my, my proposal, the department's in this case is the same. In others, it won't, it probably won't be, but I, I prepared this one. So the 20,000 is a 6% increase. You can see we have some offsetting revenues for this department. And going back in the last few years, the actual revenue brought in for clerk and agent fees and investment income. You'll notice the investment income is down substantially from FY 19 and 20. That's all in, due to the impacts COVID's had on, on banking and the markets. So we did last year, see our, unfortunately, our banking terms ran out. The three-year period we had set out with Camden expired. We continued with them on it for an additional year. We thought we would wait, give it a year. See if there's a bounce back in the rates. And then I think two months later, I think it was, they came back to us and said, the rates are going down again. So not only were we not afforded the lock of the previous three years, it decreased. And then they came back and said, yep, another half, it's going in half, I think of that again. So we were down to point two-five, I think it was, if we went one way or point one-five, if, if we locked in another. So at that point, the board said, let's go back out to bid. It didn't go up that much higher. I guess it doubled and back up to point four. But it's still a far cry from the 1.25 we had seen. So at 1.25, we were bringing in almost $30,000 in investment income, just on the checking account. So a big change there. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, with the balance we have, we'll be pushing closer to 10. For next year, the, the year-to-date shows a low, low number. That's the first six months and I don't think our program had November or December banking income, the interest included in that. So it's a little higher than the 2,400 through December. The other, the other offsets that we have for this one, beyond the revenue, proposing 17,000 from fund balance. You know, it was a number I, I used mostly to try and keep that tax, the taxation amount at a, at a close, trying to keep that closer to what it had been the last couple of years. Jake, is your hands up?
Why is the telephone line so much higher this year than last year? That's the only question I had. Looks like it's almost $2,000 more.
I think we added the other line. Yeah, we added the other, the other internet line because we've switched over to that. Those, the spectrum lines, we had two, two lines in here and the Washington School was carrying it for a while. So I've put the, it's almost twice as much, the, the spectrum line. But with the new servers and we needed that faster internet speed. So fortunately, we already had it in the building, but it's mostly that additional internet line. So that amount should, if I did it right, should be out, out of the Washington School. Any initial questions on, you know, I don't have a work plan, but kind of the goals or the overall reactions you have here? Anything you want me to follow back up on?
Andy, can you hear me?
Yes, Bill.
Is anybody else ever questioned the continued increase in wages and salaries? I know it's only about 2%, but in this age when, when all, you know, lots and lots of cities and state governments are, are having a terrible, hard time, I wonder if it's, if anybody else questions that raise, continuing to raise salaries and wages.
Are you suggesting it should be higher?
No, I'm suggesting it shouldn't be anything.
Oh.
So people aren't supposed to get a raise in line with inflation?
Well, I, I don't know that that's a, if that's a fixed rule or not, that's, you know, that's what people, well, it's what we've generally done. But in, in a time like one of the worst recession we, we've had since the Great Depression of the twenties, it may be a time to say, well, you know, we can't, we can't do that this year. And I don't know what the cost of living increases is. I'm just asking if anybody else questions that.
I don't because the cost of living, I'm pretty sure has gone up more than 2%. And in this budget, that increases on that one line is not even $3,000. So I, I would think that we, we as a town could support our town employees by providing one of the 2% increase in pay. That's my two cents on it.
Yeah, no, I don't know what it's gone up either, Donald, but, but those aren't the only wages and salaries we're paying. This is just in the admin department. So it goes all the way through the town. I just raising the question.
No, sorry. That's that 3,000 in particular, so it's 2% is across the board is what's being proposed. And 3,000 that Bill's referring to is the, the wages for three employees.
Danny, I'm sorry. Andy, do you have the number across the board, what the 2% is?
I need to go back and so in the budget book and that before the selectmen's tab, there's a whole bunch of other pages there. There's the overview. If you go all the way, the last page before the selectmen's tab folds out, the page before that shows the wages. I do need to put back in there, I took out, I need to put back in there, the planning and community development line. I'd taken it out because at one point we were looking at a possible contractor position. So I took it out and it didn't put it back in. So without that one, it changed, shows a decrease. So I do need to run that back through again.
My only question is how is it figured out every year? It'd be nice to have a long-range plan. When I was on the school board, obviously it's negotiated with the, with the union. But at least you knew what you were expecting. And when I figured these out, they're all about 2.5%, not just two. It would be nice to know what the cost of living increase is. And actually know what that is going to be year after year.
Well, the other thing that you have to look at is not just the salaries and the wages, but you have to look at the insurance and retirement. And that, you know, I get, get increased as well. I mean, it's not, it's not quite as simple as just saying, oh, it's up, wages are up 2% or wages and salaries are up 2%. I mean, it's about $5,000, I figured roughly for the administration department. But that goes all the way through, you know, wherever we have employees. And it just.
To Margaret's point, I mean, the, the teachers' union contract, I can't remember off the top of my head. I think that one might be a little bit higher than 2%. You know, we've, we've been able to maintain a 2% increase on the, on the wages for quite a few years now. But there is no long-term kind of contract, you know, there's certainly the ability to kind of set out, if that's the desire of the budget committee, at least to set out a goal as a recommendation. You know, if there's a number attached to that, of course, we won't know what the goal is until, you know, each year they determine it and share that. You know, best something through this process, if the budget committee wants to circle back on that and, you know, before it's over, have a recommendation to think about, you know, going into next year. I did check in with the select board before, you know, preparing these to see, you know, if there was, I think this was one of the things I checked in on about, does he, you know, does there a number that you want to see it go up or down by? You know, I asked about the overall budget. I wanted to go into this year's budget, kind of having a better idea or better sense of. And I asked the budget committee this as well back in November of, you know, should we be looking at a flat across the board? Not just on wages, but just overall budget, trying to get a feel for that. So I think that's something that I'd be happy to have a better understanding going in to the planning process. You know, if there is a desired goal, we can certainly incorporate. And, you know, if there is a desired goal, and we can certainly incorporate that in the pre-planning part. Going forward. Any other questions on the admin? Just again, overall high view. Uh, next, Washington School. You know, the the big changes on this one, you know, some of the things we're hoping to set out to accomplish. I mean, if anyone's been up recently. And they were over the last couple of years, you've probably noticed, I may have shown a few of you the and some of the cloud boards that you can put your fingers through in places that are rotting. And some of the sills that windows sashes that need to be, you know, cut out and replaced. And the front of the building's got a little Viking patch on it where it's a couple, a couple of the cloud board pieces actually blew off and one of the customers brought brought it into the front desk. And, you know, so we've got some work to do here. And the painting has been in need for a couple of years now. And, you know, part of it was in this year's budget. The, we had it set out to actually have some of it done and then hall construct or hall painting wasn't able to do that this spring or this year. And so I have, I have kind of asked and gotten a high estimate for or an estimate, just a high level estimate. And from another, another contractor that does work out here. And he kind of just kind of looked at, looked around the building and kind of pulled a number about, he said, so I could do the whole building, you know, including the lift to be able to get to the higher levels. And between 20 and 25. So it's a lot to probably chew off in one year. The last time it was painted, it wasn't done in one year. And, you know, so estimating about 15,000, if it comes in less, that'd be great. And but estimating 15,000 to do at least half of the building. And my hope is that we're able to fix the cloud boards, replace the rotting parts that need to be fixed before this fiscal year ends. There is money in this year's budget to do that. And just a matter of getting a contractor lined up that has the necessary paperwork to do the work. And there is some interior painting that needs to happen. I don't think that's been done since the building was redone over 15, it was about 15, almost 15 years ago now. And so there are some rooms and places where the paint needs to be touched up, just about every room. And at some point, the wood floor in the meeting room and into the entryway will need more than just a mop. You know, I don't know if this is the year to consider it or not. You know, but at some point, looking to refinish the, you know, sand down and refinish these. I think there's been enough water. At least on sections of this meeting room floor that would warrant, you know, some more substantial work. And whether it constitutes all the wood floors in here or not, it's another matter. And well, just tried to find an estimate. I didn't get a quote for that one yet, but just based on averages, it looks like it'd be probably pushing 10 grand to have someone come in and refinish the floors here. But those are the bigger, bigger goals to proposing to try and set out to accomplish for the building this year. Any questions on any of those?
My only comment is to make sure before we paint, we get rotten cells and that that work done so that we're not painting bad wood.
Yep. Yeah, the not surprising, the the east and north sides of the building where we're seeing it. There's some spots on the southern side, the the parking lot facing side, actually, that and that's where the section of the small section of wood was handed to us that came off there. And, you know, but it's kind of where the corners come together. High view, you know, summary here. You know, it's showing. I mean, again, small, the increase there on the improvement line. All the other ones are more or less just a small increase from where it was before. And the only offset is no revenue, of course, to offset this. And in a reminder, again, that the custodial fees are for whatever reason are born on this line and or this department or this building, but are also those wages are are spent in other buildings as well. But the only other offset other than taxation from this one is the the fund balance. Again, choosing an amount here that is close to the improvements line, thinking that these, that that line item, that number isn't something that we need to fund annually. And hopefully between this year and the proposal for next year, we're able to kind of get over a hurdle of a lot of things that need to get done. And so it'd be comfortable suggesting that we take a good majority of that out of fund balance for next year. And in hopes of that line coming back down again.
But have you totaled up how much you anticipate taking out of fund balance if it passes as is?
Yeah, it's in that fold out sheet there right before the selectmen's tab.
Yeah.
313,500.
There it is. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, feedback, questions for the building? Particularly the improvements? All right. And the assessor department, department of one or half of one. So Wes, Wes does that. And talked with him a little bit. He mostly says, I work with what you give me. So, you know, last year we had kind of gone into it. Thinking about the hours, this is again a part time position. Funding, I think, at approximately 15 hours a week on average, 12 to 15, somewhere in that ballpark. And the only big thing that we need this again, in regards to this department, the the bigger thing I want is to make sure that we continue to include is the tax map updates. Have money in this year's budget again to try and and get over a little bit of a hurdle from the past few years. Matt's been exploring some of the tack, the GIS needs, trying to steer him away from a little bit the tax map stuff. Because that's something that we need to kind of identify a solution long term with, but that's something he's him and Laetitia with Knox EMA have been talking about. Have reached out to. I was talking with the the professor from Yumei Machias. Again, that's something that their their department has done for towns, especially in Hancock and Washington County. And so they know how to do it, but they had gotten some state funding to do all those towns up there and I didn't, you know, digitize all of their maps. And so they did that. They had the experience in that and then passed that on to a contractor that we've done some work with through the, through an island institute project. So I've reached out to that person. And that's, this is definitely something that we need to identify and find a solution for going forward. And, you know, it is an expensive endeavor, but a very needed, a high, much needed one. And so we don't get behind. I think we're right now trying to update four or five years worth of tax map changes. Any, any given year. Any given year you've got. I think, I think Phil's got two things going. Phil, can you mute? All right. Yeah. So as I was saying, any given tax year, I think we're depends on on what's happening in that year for real estate changes or splits or or new parcels being created about. You know, it's not too many, probably in the 10 to 15 a year range. And so once we get over this backlog, it becomes a lot more manageable. Before you had a former fellow that stayed on to do just the tax map updates for us. And he stopped doing those, I think in 2014. And so again, something that just trying to set out and do, and I think this amount should more than cover the more routine updates.
Andy, did you say that Matt is working on other, on other maps or just on these tax maps?
And so other GIS needs, so we're identifying things, you know, one of the projects that and we set out last year to try and do is digitize some of our cemeteries. And and that's one that I'd like to see us try and do, and he'll have some capacity to try and do this spring as the weather gets a little more tolerable to be outside for longer periods. And continue that. He's also been working on, you know, trying to build an online web viewer resource so that things like the groups like our planning board or planning commission or any any particular citizen or our code officer would be able to go and access our, our, what we choose to provide anyways, or make visible the layers. And like our zoning maps or parcel data. And, you know, some towns have these, these viewers to be able to access that. And the only way we've had that in the past is on the computer using the disk software that came from a disk that no longer, you know, is how they do that. And so Matt's been learning a lot about tokens and how GIS works right now and credits that you can buy. There's, there's a lot of web based or cloud based products. He was sharing with us today that Laetitia Knox EMA. You know, was considering hosting some servers to be able to host and in, you know, help communities do and maintain their GIS database. And so that's something that we're continuing to learn a little bit more about.
Because I, you know, I've mentioned to you, I some, like the land use ordinance map needs some updating. So I was wondering, is that in in this line or is is a I don't even know where, if you're talking about GIS needs, I have two questions. Where's the money that Matt's, I should know this, that Matt's being paid by? And secondly, how do you get in the queue for the maps that need updating in the town?
Nope, great questions. So the fellowship is funded, you'll find on the planning and community development line. Or department. And there's some costs associated with licensing for GIS in multiple departments. And, you know, thinking that we were going to potentially at one point have public works, you know, having access to a creator or a field license, you know, so they could log data. You know, things like culverts and guardrails and other assets we have to maintain and try to put those in a map somewhere. So when it comes to work planning, we can visualize, you know, where it is we're working. Or have a very quick reference to you know, query and select and view all, say, all culverts that are more than 30 years old. You know, we'd be able to quickly put that in a map and view them all where they are on the island. And some of the stuff we have created already, some of it has just point or 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 point polygon, I'm trying to remember. That without any data behind it, some of the stuff we have a lot of data for or spreadsheets, but no, no mapped asset. And, you know, so we need to try and bring those together so they're in in that GIS database. So some of those costs are kind of scattered throughout in different departments. But there isn't one specifically, as you brought up recently, for, you know, going and trying to map all the wetlands out here. That's probably going to be something that we would have to do through a grant or some sort of joint effort with another entity, I'm guessing. And that could be a pretty time intensive and costly endeavor. Matt, am I missing any of the GIS? Projects we've been talking about?
No, that's kind of the the bulk of the stuff that I've worked on and I'm definitely hoping to once that, that that online web viewer, which specifically will hopefully have a pretty robust parcel viewer functionality that'll allow you know, the planning committee and any other committee to kind of zoom in on specific parts of that they're talking about and be able to you know, evaluate whatever, whatever they're working on at that given moment. After having kind of done that, I'm hoping to work a bit, having that on the table, work with Faye and code enforcement. And maybe start working on some of those other map revisions if if time allows for it, which I I'm hoping, you know, I I still have 18 months on my fellowship. I I think there should be some more time for that sort of stuff after this first round of mapping work, but obviously something I would have to work on with Andy and Gabe.
Thanks, man. All right. And so again, the summary page for the assessors line. The increase on the the wages is accounting for the 2%, trying to keep and maintain the same number of hours. The service fee increase. So the, 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 the number we've seen in the past, the 33, 35, 36, that's the software, the licensing fee for the the real estate database we maintain in Trio that connects with our, our receiving programs. You know, that's, that's in the last few years been the only thing we spent. So the increase there is largely for the tax maps. And then the, the company that we use has gone to this, they're doing some upgrades to their their software. So there was an increase in cost there to continue to utilize that. So those are the majority of those two fees there. Other than that, the the rest of it's pretty well on par with what it has been. And there is a little bit of offsetting revenue for this one. The tax fee interest, that's the the money that, you know, when when taxes aren't paid on time, there's an interest rate that's applied to that. The state did lower that fairly substantially for going into this year. So I might need to reduce that a little bit more. But you can see what the late payment interest fees have brought in the last few years, a little under $20,000 each year. There's been, it's, you don't know what it is, it's not usually too much, but there is some tree growth reimbursement. That's the money the state provides municipalities for properties that are in tree growth to state tax program. And they're acknowledging that, you know, because of their program, towns are essentially losing a little bit of money. So they have a reimbursement program. Other than that, just utilizing the fund balance for a little bit to try and help us with that GIS cost in some part. And again, try and keep the taxation amount for this department close to what it has been. Any questions on, on the assessing?
Uh, Andy, I have a question. It's Bill. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, good. Okay. One is, tell me again, why the hours for the assessor have gone up by a third from fiscal year 20 to 21? And then actually gone up a little bit more this year?
The hours or the amount of money?
Well, both. I mean, if you on the, on the page of assessor wages, it shows the number of hours uh, over the, over the, since 17 through 22.
Right.
And it went from 624 and 20 to 821. That's a third increase.
Sure. So the 800 was what we estimated it to be for this year we're in right now. And that increase from 624 captures just increase in demand. You'll see back in 2017, it was 390 hours. And if you go back to then, that's when we had someone out here once a month, I think it was. You know, so it's a substantial change from once a month to once a week. And but I'm, I'm assuming that most folks that communicate with the assessor today compared to what it was back then would find find our assessor much more accessible, available. You know, there was a backlog of work that had to be taken up. Our I think most folks are probably generally aware, you know, we have our, our overall assessed value, the over 500 million. And the value of the properties that we assess, the state sets out its valuation for each municipality. And we know we can't be too far above or below that. And so when Wes took over, I think we were we were higher than what the state had a success for. And I think we were at 109%. And if you get to, I think, 110, that's where, you know, it's too much by statute. And so we were able to, Wes, that was one of the things Wes had to try and do is get that back closer to what the state shows showed us for value. And since, since he started and just the way the market's gone. You know, that amount that the state sees as as being worth is increased dramatically, which is a large part of why our county tax bill has gone up almost $40,000 for next year. So the, it's just a function of, you know, the need for work, the need to get work done. And there was some substantial things that came up in the last year, especially around abatement requests. You know, there was one, two property owners that I asked him if he could kind of how much time do you think you've spent on these, these two alone? He estimated for those two properties in particular, probably close to 40, 40 plus hours on on those two alone. You know, so when you're averaging close to 20 hours a week, that's, you know, half of, half of a month's worth of work. And just on on those two particular issues. So it was acknowledging that there's just more demand, more questions, more things that are needing to be caught up on over the last, you know, starting back from 2017.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or things we can, I can dig into when we meet again and talk about this? All right. We'll go through this one and folks and take a five minute stretch. I think Gabe's gonna try and hop on or I think it was around five. And so we'll go through this one and then take a, take a stretch. And professional services, a couple of years ago, we expanded this to be more than just legal fees. And it now includes engineering fees as well. So again, within the last couple of years, the So again, within the last couple of years, the board had put out, solicited some engineering firms to try and have a firm that we work with. You know, there was any, any given time for a project, I think we've had three, if not four, at one point, working on projects for us in a, you know, short period of time. So the value in one firm kind of seeing where the town's headed on things, so we're not going at things. You know, a joint, you know, this project here, I mean, one that kind of triggered it was the sidewalk down by the bank, that section that caved in near the bridge. We had one firm looking at that and then another firm looking at the sidewalk design from the ferry boat. You know, if either one of them knew that it was a more of a, you know, our, our goals going forward, they would have designed the intersection differently, you know? And that kind of, for me, kind of started this in motion to say, shouldn't there just be one firm that we, that we're able to rely on? And selecting Wooden and Kern at the end of the day with the company we've done a lot of work with in the past, mostly in a large part because of their capacity, their familiarity with us, but also their capacity to be able to help with grant writing, finding funding. So again, expanding this, this department, if you will, to include engineering. That's most of what, you know, I've put here on these goals. I mean, the legal stuff, we don't want to have to pay any of it if we, if we don't have to. But things come up, being able to have, you know, whether it's, you know, having them review our policies or a lawn, land use ordinance matter, you know, or something else that we can't account for. So there's that. On the engineering side, there are some projects that the board's wanting to see done. And that's going to require, if we're going to have a, a good estimate or a good concept going into it, to be able to present at any one town meeting or further develop what, what we want to do. These preliminary engineering reviews would kind of provide us a concept of design in an estimate. So the North Haven Road and Vinyl Cove, many of you probably all know about that project years ago. It was 15 years ago now. There's a section of road just below Loud's Pit that floods. Margaret's been following this through the sea level rise work, but I think our estimate is at least five or six of the monthly high tides, you know, and with that, anything over 10 and a half feet, and depending on the wind direction, will likely put water over that road, that section. You know, if it's, if it's a few inches, it's an inconvenience and, you know, you might choose to go the other way. But we've seen it at or almost above the guardrail, you know, which puts over two feet on the center line. That's a substantial amount of water. So there's kind of two issues going on. The road itself is kind of sinking in that area as it's built through mud flat. You know, and then of course, the, the volume of water that enters that cove as a result of increasing that culvert. So having some money to be able to have them work through some high-level concept designs and cost estimates for that. I'm still waiting on that number for that to be done, but I kind of put a placeholder in here. I think it was for 10 or 15, $10,000. Hope it's not going to be more than that, but it, it may. I should be able to hear on that before, hopefully by the end of the week. The second project is the High Street Sidewalk, another project the board wants to see done. We, I met with a couple, with a couple island contractors to look at that. You know, the hope was that you could avoid any engineering at all and can kind of, you know, just some common sense and, and experience, be able to just deal with the lower section on the backside and heading towards the North Haven Road. You know, and that quickly turned into, right now, the sidewalks, three feet wide at best in some places. We need to be at a minimum of four to meet ADA, ADA requirements, ideally five feet. You know, so that then creates a challenge between the drainage, the private property, the need for a handrail potentially in sections of it. And then trying to piece that without considering the whole sidewalk network over High Street. I, I was suggesting that we'd get similar PR done for High Street and, and look at the whole project, the whole, you know, from the intersection where the fountain is all the way down to the bank. And incorporate all those drainage, that drainage system in that. Again, a placeholder for $10,000. I hopefully will find out sooner rather than later about what that estimate will be to do that level of work. In the third project, we had it in this year's budget. We will not be able to afford to do that with this year's line that was allocated. That's the flood map review. Last year, when we talked about it, we talked about doing it just for Main Street. Particularly the north side of Main Street, you know, on the pond side, it's in a V flood zone and it just doesn't, doesn't, doesn't work. There were some errors. If any of you joined the, the meeting a couple of weeks ago with Nathan with ransom engineering, he identified through some other work, I think with the city of Rockland, that there was an error in some of the flood map data in, you know, in the models they ran. But FEMA, when they were approached by, you know, and found out that it was there, you know, they weren't going to go and just change all of it just based on that. So, you know, they provided a high-level review of, of what Vinyl Haven's eight transects look like, the, the challenges or the issues with those transects, the fact that there's only eight for an island with as many deep coves and contours as we have along the shoreline, seemed inadequate to accurately map flood, flood risk and potential. And then of course, the impacts that have on property, property owners is huge. You know, some of the Main Street businesses, if you haven't heard or don't know, have told me anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 to get flood insurance on some of their property buildings. And you try and throw that on top of all the other parts that come with trying to run a business and you start to wonder, well, what does Main Street look like in the future? If, if these costs are only going to increase, you know, and what role should the town play in trying to get more accurate maps? And so looking at Main Street alone, they estimated 15 to 20 grand to be able to do that. Island-wide review. Again, it's high estimates, but until they get into it, Nathan was estimating $70,000 to $100,000 to do that. There was some good feedback on that presentation, a lot to take in and think about. And the board had just talked about it really, really quickly after that meeting. There's no proposal, you know, real proposal at the moment, but this is a number that I put in there that doesn't reflect looking at the whole island. So that's something I imagine there'll be a lot of discussion about this year as we had done so last year. So I'm not sure, is there any questions on, on either of those lines?
My question is, how did they map the outer islands if they only did eight shots, sections through the island of Vinyl Haven proper?
Great question. I don't know if anyone asked that specifically.
And how do we do the outer islands if we reassess?
Right. We can follow, I can follow up with them. I know one, one discrepancy found was Calderwood Neck, the entirety of Calderwood Neck. There's no transect coming from, from the northeast. Right? So there's something on the southeast and I don't even know if there's anything easterly. I think it's more southeast where it goes into Robert's Harbor. And then there isn't another transect going east to north on that side of the island until you get to the thoroughfare. You know, so there's a large chunk of the island that doesn't have one. And I'm, I'm assuming that the outer islands are probably in a similar boat, that they only map the larger, larger island. That's more of a function of time and money for, for the larger entity that's doing that. So we can ask them more specifically and follow up.
I'm happy to do that, Andy. I can, and I'll CC you, Margaret, and CC Andy, and just follow up with Nathan and see if we can get an answer from him.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gabe. Eric, you had a? One would hope, not a fair assumption. You know, we look at Main Street and what the plans are for downtown improvement project that we're trying to get funding for. And we were, when approaching them about that, you know, said to state aid road, but the, there are different levels of state aid road depending on vehicle count. Right? So every rural town is not going to rank high on priority for state aid road because we just don't have the vehicle counts. So there, that's where they said, yeah, we'll help participate. Here's the MPI program, right? So you can fill this application out and if, you know, we haven't done project out on the, on your community, you know, in a long time or ever, you know, the chance of funding is really good. You know, we were able to secure the, the, the most amount of funding for Main Street through that MPI citing many issues. So I do have another email out that I just sent last week to the regional engineer, regional manager about, one of the things was about that section of road. So I haven't heard back yet, but I will circle back with him on that. But my impression was in, in previous conversations, it would probably look like an MPI. It didn't look like that they would have a whole lot of involvement. Doesn't mean we can't continue to push and ask. Any other questions on some of those things that we're setting out to do? Anything that you'd like to see done that's not included in there?
Has anyone talked to, talked about how to get co-funding from the people it's going to benefit?
It was, it was kind of floated as if it's not funded through taxation, then the only other way to do that would be one to have all the private landowners do it on their own, which, you know, would be a little crazy for each, for each of them to take this on. One has done it. There's another one that I know has reached out because of that meeting and said they were about to do it. But yeah, so that's, that's the only other option other than taxation. Or, you know, so it's, it's a possibility. Didn't seem like there'd be, I'd probably too much grant funding out there for this project in of itself. Unless you wanted to try and couple it with some sort of resiliency work, but you know, I think that might potentially be a stretch, but we can continue to look for that as well. My, 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 as I reached out to some of those folks, reached out to me, it said, you know, a lot's going to depend on town meeting. If it's not funded there, then it has to be a private-public kind of partnership with property owners. But I don't know how you get into, you know, assessing a fee to any one property owner. This is your share. Cause everyone's property is so different. Do you have thoughts on it?
No, I just, I just keep wondering how people are going to react for paying for 16 businesses downtown and having it be tax, you know, taxpayer money. And then if we do the whole island, it's affecting a few people, again, not the majority, or maybe the majority. I don't know. That would be an interesting number to know how many people it actually affects.
And I think Nathan tried to estimate from aerial imagery with buildings where I think he, I want to say, put a number out of like three, over 350 properties or buildings he thought were in it. I, I need to double check, but I think, just looking at aerial photo, of course, some of those could be hidden in trees. Some of those could be boathouses and not houses.
That's right.
So, but that, I think probably gives the ballpark idea. You know, there is another, also not high resolution, but another tool out there that came out, Flood Factor, I think it's called. That kind of puts some numbers on things. So if anyone's interested, I can try and bring that up at, at another budget meeting, if you want to see what that looks like. But if anyone has a chance or, you know, is interested in this, we did post the video, the presentation with Nathan to our, you can find it on our Facebook or on the YouTube page. You know, and I think I put a link in it on our town website, which is just newly launched with a new look. So if you're really interested in it, definitely see if you can take a look at that.
It was very interesting.
Any other questions or?
I don't know. Jake, Jake has an old raised hand or a new raised hand. He has a virtual raised hand.
I didn't lower it earlier, but maybe it's a new one.
No. Oh, it's lowered.
Wow, I didn't know I had to lower it. Sorry.
I think there's a way for me to do it. I just wasn't popping up quick and then your, your, your thing went away, so I just stopped. So with that, folks wanting to take just like two or three minutes to take a quick break? Can't see it, so maybe, maybe not.
Sure.
All right. Why don't we just plan to come back by 5:15? All right. Now that Bill's got himself a snack.
But I just wanted to go back to this because, you know, just thinking about, we started this position essentially to work on the downtown master plan and then provide additional capacity and support, just internal for town, internal stuff as well as committee support. But I just wanted to, you know, that was 2000, fiscal year 2019 when we started. And we started this part-time, you know, it's part-time position. And I just wanted to look back and just give, give a sense of, you know, what, what the position does or, you know, what it's for. And so if you have that, then you're, you're, you know, you're see, you're looking at the same thing that we're looking at on the screen. So really what, what we've gone on to do is sort of continue with the downtown master plan post adoption. So all of the action steps that are, have led, are leading up to the actual infrastructure project, work with sea level rise, a lot of work right now with broadband and as well as another recommendation that came out of the downtown master plan, which is the development of a, of a community development corporation, a quasi municipal community development corporation. And then COVID has really sort of highlighted the outreach and engagement piece, more outreach than, than engagement necessarily. And then, you know, just kind of looking at deliverables of what, what the position brings. The downtown master plan this past year has really been so far about funding, pursuing funding. We are moving into engagement and outreach here fairly soon. We have one more grant that we're applying for. Sea level rise continues to be ongoing work, work plan. You'll see here what the, what the outputs are. The CDC is the Community Development Corporation and that is working with a Community Development Corporation Committee. And so that project again is the facilitating a process with that committee that will lead to the formation of a community, a quasi municipal community development corporation, assuming it's approved by the select board and then voted on by the town. And then Matt has really, Matt Chablonsky, our Island Fellow, has really taken on a lot of the follow-up from the board strategic plan in that implementing the KPIs or the key performance indicators or just the metrics by which we determine if we're actually accomplishing the goals in that strategic plan. A lot of my work since COVID has been about outreach materials. Andy just mentioned the website, so that's been a project of mine, which isn't completed yet. The information on the website still is a, you know, there needs to be a lot more that's updated, but at least the new design has been implemented. And then something that hasn't happened yet, but moving toward our next comprehensive planning cycle, the, the, a process that would be drafted hopefully with a comprehensive planning committee, but at least the initial community visioning process that would happen before that comprehensive planning, the next comprehensive planning cycle. So anyway, I just wanted to go, go back to this because, to give everyone a sort of refresher on what the, what the position was intention, initially intended for, what it has evolved into, and then what, you know, what, what we're sort of looking at for the coming year. So I'm gonna, I guess I'll just screen share this page that Andy was just on. And so I guess, I think what I'll do is just, just sort of share some of the, the, again, like the, the goals and then the work that falls under these goals and sort of the project areas that these fall under. And I'll, I'll try to be succinct and then just leave it open to conversation or questions. So, yeah, sorry.
Is there a way to zoom in a little bit on your screen?
Yeah, definitely.
I know it'll make it harder for the columns, but. That's good. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, so what I, and I apologize, like I did, I did make my own sheet because I, I added a lot to it just for my own benefit and, and breaking, breaking down how I look at the work and who would be involved. And so I, I took the board strategic plan. And so what you see over here is a focus area from the strategic plan. The green here are the folk, the objectives that are from the strategic plan. And then the yellow are the goals that the department has come up with to meet these objectives. And then the projects are defined sort of as these project areas. And then the strategies are the actual things that we'll be doing to meet these goals within these project areas. So that's how it's, it's been broken down. So you can see, and does, and Andy, you said everyone has this in their workbook? Oh, no, you said that, that, that's not in the workbook, is that?
It is in there, it's just over, it's like, this is one of the challenges in trying to print it. I, I didn't try to print it on a big sheet, but, you know, so the, it's on, I think, six or eight sheets. When it's printed, it gets a little bit harder to follow.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, I'll just go through it really quick in terms of just, just what we're seeing on the screen that are sort of in these first five categories here. So our goal, the department goal for meeting this objective, the town of Vinahaven maintains a strong financial permission, fiscal position. So what, what I see or what Andy and I see for that is just like working on our internal systems to make things more efficient, to increase accountability and that whole piece of aligning the work to the strategic plan. So the work of the, of this department, other departments, committees, and, and to really look at those key performance indicators. So we can say, okay, this, we're doing this project, but ultimately this is what that, that means. Like where, you know, I'm just gonna scoot over here real quick just to look at what some of those, whoops. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get to this. For some reason, I'm not able to scroll. Anyway, okay, I'm not gonna bother with that. But so anyway, so, so, so most of this falls under the strategic planning and KPI projects. But these are some of the, you know, these are the, the things we would do in that to meet those goals. So a lot of internal work, the KPIs, tracking KPIs, and then actually using the findings to go back and say, like, what do we need to do better? What do we need to change? And then we ultimately want to be able to generate an annual report that actually uses the strategic plan and the KPIs. So people, you know, will pick up the annual report, say, oh, this is, these are the, the department's projects or this is what the department does. This is how much these things cost and these are the things that are the accomplishments. And this is how it looks like in terms of KPIs. So another, another goal under maintaining a strong financial position is to try to offset the costs of a lot of the project-based work for this department with grants. So that's just like looking for grant funding, writing the grants and administering the grants. So that's another way to meet that objective. The next, the next focus area is community services. The town's goal, objective for community services is to provide municipal services in an efficient, effective and respectful manner. And so the department's goal to meet that objective is to provide consistent outreach to the community in order to increase engagement. So a lot of this then has to do with how we present and share information. So these goals about regular reporting of staffing committees to keep the, the select board and community informed and up to date, website and social media management. And then we, we did have approval from the select board this past year to, or this fiscal year to actually do a town newsletter, which, which I haven't done. But the idea of, you know, providing an actual quarterly newsletter that could be the non-digital solution to providing the members of our community who don't use digital media with, with, with information about town projects and, and what, what's happening in the town. Engagement, you know, that's, that's a piece we haven't really focused on other than, you know, Andy taking calls or responding to inquiries. But we don't really have a mechanism for, you know, taking information from the website or responding to, you know, just inquiries and things that come in. So that's another piece to, to consider in that. And then investing in and using a variety of methods to increase engagement. So if the town wants to commit to getting more people engaged in the civic process, in making town decisions, like this, there are all of these things that, that we've proposed here. CP Media is a, a different alternative that would, would provide a video streaming to the public with a different level of engagement, direct engagement that does not involve Facebook or YouTube. So people could access that media directly from the website. It's a little bit safer and I would say more legit way of, of doing hybrid meetings. So there's time in here about, about using that CP Media Zoom. You know, we have, we have one subscription now. Anyway, so there's, there's different things, Zoom, Survey Monkey, a little bit of training, you know, to, to help people get more comfortable in using these platforms. So moving along, this, another goal, again, this is about training and support for town committees. And it would also be for, for staff that are using some of these new tools, increasing capacity for committees with new, new, excuse me, sorry, we're, we're working on a committee handbook. So this idea that, you know, annually, new committee members could have an orientation. They could, they could get the support that they need if there's any digital media that they need to learn how to use. That support would be provided to them in, in, in sort of training or workshops. We're talking about, you know, increasing committee capacity through, through other training opportunities like, you know, hybrid meeting training, facilitation skills training. And then also sort of the idea that we want to have a better sort of protocol, whether it's like a communications plan or protocols that really make one or two people responsible for the managed outreach. So it, it, it's sort of a floating obligation right now for between two or three people. But to focus that and say, if we're gonna do a really good job with outreach and communications, you know, should, you know, we have one person that's managing the posts and the agendas and the calendar events and keeping everything on a, on a really sort of tight and disciplined schedule. So communications are timely and consistent and the community has easy access to the information they need. There's a little bit in there about support for the planning commission and them sort of having an annual process and the ability to sort of streamline their work according to an annual calendar. This, this may change this GIS internal capacity because Andy has been researching other ideas around how we make GIS work for us, but not necessarily the idea that it would need to live in-house. But that's, GIS is definitely a need. But I think we talked about, we've been talking about ways to meet that need that don't necessarily fall long-term on the town because there are other ways of getting those needs addressed. Infrastructure is the next focus area. The objective for the town is to provide safe, accessible, well-maintained, dependable infrastructure. The planning department's goal to meet that objective is to provide project management assistance grant and outreach engagement support and management to town and committee-driven infrastructure projects. So right now that means the broadband initiative and the downtown project. Economic development is a focus area of the select board. The objective is invest in planning projects and services that increase economic diversity and community resiliency. So these are like things that in my mind would sort of fall under the umbrella of this potential community development corporation. But it's really sort of looking sort of, you know, longer term or looking ahead and saying, how do we build resilience in the community? So these might not necessarily be projects that are on the books right now or they might partially be on the books. But sort of looking at what do we have going on that we could do better? Like, you know, sustainable waste management, you know, maybe projects related to sea level rise, like, you know, assistance with adaptation. Housing has come up. Economic diversification is, is a really big issue, especially when we consider the, the potential fragility of the, the fishery. So, so those are sort of things that are out there. Community development, working on this community development corporation to create a sustainable business model, really get that corporation up and going. And then economic development. I don't know the current, where, where the Chamber of Commerce is currently with their, their planning process and sort of what they're doing next. I need to check in with them. But this question of where does economic development live? And this idea that there may be some crossover, it's, you know, the possible, possibly receiving some financial support from the chamber to be able to address some of those needs, whether it's, you know, ways to support businesses sort of like we've been doing through COVID by providing resources and, and information. Maybe additional strategies that have to do with economic diversification. Housing, I mean, there's a, there's a housing committee that is gonna be up in. Um, housing, I mean, there's a, there's a housing committee that is gonna be up and running um hopefully soon. So, you know, that's another piece of sort of providing that support or facilitation around housing. Overall, building community resilience and that, that um could be related to Sea Level Rise slash Climate Committee. So looking at um likely um in relation to the state's climate. Um, this, the main climate council's recommendations, how does that relate to um our community, how does it impact our community? So looking, again, looking ahead, what can we address? Waste Watchers, that's sustainable um waste management, how can we do better with sustainable waste management? Community Services, um, I look at that as sort of, you know, working with uh existing community groups and organizations. Really strengthen networks, build partnerships, provide additional uh support where, where um it's needed. And lastly, um we've got a couple of things under uh education, working on digital literacy uh for the, with the, with the broadband task force. And then overall building resiliency, uh trying to look at opportunities in the community that could address multiple needs. So um there's, there's talks, talk about, you know, a swap shop using, possibly using um a portion of the net factory building. So just trying to think ahead about like, what needs are there in the community? You know, is it, what, what can we do to sort of bring um different projects, programs together to address multiple community needs at the same time? So again, like I said, this whole section, I feel like, could possibly fall under the umbrella of a community development corporation, but like, where does it begin? Um, and this idea that, you know, it could possibly begin in this department. Um, if the town sees that as a logical um step forward. So I, I know that's a lot of information. I apologize for going on for a little bit, but that, that's um sort of what I have and what I'm presenting. Open it up to whatever thoughts or questions people have, and I can go off of this if people don't need to see it.
There any questions um on what Gabe had kind of presented? That's the first chance tonight. You've gotten to really see what, you know, kind of hopefully what some of the other departments will be able to do and will be able to do in the future is share better about how, what we're trying to set out to do. Again, the things that are identified in there come from committee. Identified needs or select board identified needs, um, you know, but to really show how it's connected back to that strategic plan. Um, so that folks don't think we're just creating things for no reason, um, you know, and, and trying to put that strategic plan front and center. Um, so there any questions on some of those things that are presented as things to follow up on or do for next year?
I just have a question, Gabe, on how you're um managing to do what we're trying to subdivide you too many ways. Can you keep up with all this?
I guess it, that depends on who you ask, Margaret, if I'm keeping up with it. Um, I think um the addition of Matt is very helpful. Um, Matt's been able to take on um a good bit of the work, and certainly having a colleague um has been really helpful. So um, I would say it's, um, you know, I'm still, I'm still part-time. Although I've been working full-time, um, because I'm grant-funded in a, in a few different areas. So um I'm able to, you know, my taxation um salary, if you will, is still where it needs to be, but my other time is being covered um through, through grant funding right now. So um I think um that it, it, I couldn't take on anymore. And depending on um, you know, how, I definitely triage, like, I do, you know, the most important things first and the things that have a deadline coming up. Um, and uh, but I think we're all in that position, you know, here, like, I don't, I don't I think we're sort of all like at, at capacity. So I don't feel like it's unmanageable. I just feel like um some things need to be finished uh before more stuff is uh taken on. But I, that's the thing with the, you know, these things, a lot of these things are projects, so they have, they will have an end at some point. Um, and that, that opens the door for either, okay, you're done, or there's more opportunity.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, working closely with Gabe, she is a jewel, and I've never seen anybody work so hard and keep so many balls in the air.
I agree.
It's very, very impressive, and we're very lucky to have her.
Thanks, Jananne.
Any additional questions, comments on the, kind of that overview of the work plan, if you will? So on the, the budget side of things, you'll see there's two different um, you know, bottom line, the budget proposed about the same between those two, between mine and, and Gabe's. But um, you know, we've talked quite a bit about, you know, how to present that, whether it be in my column, it says a full-time staff member. Um, which was broached last year, um, you know, and, and then backed off with the addition of the fellow, um splitting some of that work. But then um compared to that, the department line, Gabe had presented originally a contract basis. Um, and so some of those, some of those items that were in red, as you noticed that she went through, um, did kind of show for where she felt um, you know, some of those things could be shifted elsewhere within the town. Um, you know, whether it was admin, general admin support out of the town office, or, or, you know, what have you. But um, so it kind of shows compared side by each, you know, what, what those two options might look like. Um, you know, whether it's personnel versus contracted services, so um, kind of gives you an idea there. Um, obviously, the big difference here is the increased number of hours, um, and with that pushed to full-time, being that, you know, needing to provide benefits. Um, so is there feedback or, or questions, you know, kind of around those two kind of models?
Andy, any question on the, the revenue side? Are we not, so we're not expecting any revenue like we got last year?
There, there were some grant funds that Gabe was reminding me of that I didn't include in here. Um, so, Gabe, do you wanna touch base on some of the possible grant funds that you were identifying?
Yeah, definitely. Um, I think I can even share. Um, and again, this is looking, I'll share my screen, but this is looking from a contractor perspective, but it would it would um be the same thing if it was an employee. So um, some of these are actually different than um what I have on here. And this is a huge assumption of that, that the Chamber of Commerce would wanna work with, with um us to do economic development and would provide funding, but I, I put that in there, cause it is something we've talked about in the past. So what you'll see is um overall that um there is a potential um to cost share. Um, I'm, I'm, I've calculated thirty-two percent of, of the, the cost. So um, so if, if that grant funding, you know, if tho, that funding were to come through, the actual cost to the town if funded by thirty-two percent by grants would be closer to fifty thousand dollars. Um, this, this number i- is different. I actually, I actually submitted a grant for closer to ten thousand dollars uh rather than um forty-three hundred. Um, I just never changed that, and, you know, these are always, this funding is, is, is guaranteed. So we know we have this funding coming in, um, this one and this one, we don't, we don't know. And also, we don't know if there's other, you know, we're talking about Coastal Communities Grant. We're talking about a couple of other grants that could potentially offset uh, offset the cost. And we do have, you know, we do, we're still working off of broadband is pretty much paid for by the broadband grant we have right now. So that, that will continue to go uh for the rest of this ye- year, fiscal year, and then ca- calendar year. So there are, there's that as well, and that's not included in here. So the wa, the rough estimate was, yes, there's offset. Um, I said thirty-two percent, whether that's fully accurate or not, I I don't know, but that's just based on the things I know where we have applied for. And again, this is a, a, just a guess, but a, a conversation that perhaps the chamber would be open to if that's the direction they're moving in, but are not hiring a staff person.
It looks like thirteen thousand of it was um more or less secured, if you will. And um the money for the broadband that will carry over into next fiscal year isn't included in that line, in that twenty, twenty, or thirty-two percent, right? Um, and of course, the, a big chunk of that is the, the chamber one. So there is, at least, it looks like there's at least probably ten to fifteen thousand in that that could help offset um in the potential for a little bit more. And of course, there's always um the potential for grants that we, that are on the radar right now, that could come up, that support work that's already um in the works. I mean, you know, one thing you don't wanna do is take on grants that require additional work, you know, and, and kind of push you to deliver on those that are a little bit outside of what you set out to do. And so I think the trick has been to find things that, you know, are exactly what we're trying to get done. Um, and Gabe's been really good at getting those um in the last few years.
One, yeah, adding the question, so in that, the grant money is available, whether she's a full-time employee or not, correct? Are you looking for a recommendation here, if we should go one way or the other? Cause I would, I would push towards making her a full-time employee if she, if she still wants the job. That would be my recommendation.
That's great to hear. Um, yeah, I mean, I think for right now, I mean, if we wanted, I mean, folks wanted to take on like a straw pull, it's fine. But, you know, trying to keep this a little bit higher level more in the, um, on this, I guess, yeah, on the structure of it um, or more so the goals and work products, um, and then we can again get in the weeds on, on um the cost and, and some of the lines in there at a future meeting. Um, but if folks wanted to kind of throw general support one way or the other, that'll help clarify going forward at least.
Well, I'd certainly be on board.
Great. Um, are folks able to see my screen? Do you see the, the summary page for the planning department?
Yes.
Yes.
I gotta get it so Eric can see it. Um, is there any other ques, any other questions for Gabe right now? If not, Gabe, thank you for hopping on and we'll go back back in here and get, cover some other areas.
Great. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Gabe.
Bye-bye.
All right. Bear with me just one moment. All right. Um, town property, um, I guess the next one I got. Yeah. All right. So for town property, um, the, kind of the big changes um in this one, the, some of you may have caught some of the selectmen's meetings and the discussion about the swap shop. Of course, all of you probably know, we haven't had it open since uh last March. Um, and there's the desire to see that open again. Um, you know, between wanting to see changes in how that functions, uh how much stuff the town absorb, the costs and the stuff that gets thrown out at the town's expense. Um, the time to manage that, the, the need to see, again, changes there and a better, better facility for that. Um, you know, the board has kind of blessed the idea of utilizing the Public Works Garage on Main Street as an interim location to try and open up late, or sometime this spring or before summer. Um, there's a couple of volunteers from the Waste Watchers Committee that are willing to dedicate time to, at least a couple, willing to dedicate time to try and pull together what they remember Bodine running, um, you know, and try and put some new rules in place or some new, new things in place to eventually, if it moves back to the transfer station, um, one, so be it, but also have these new rules in place. Um, so with that, there's a little bit of, a little bit of cost to having, um, to try and create um, um, you know, having the electricity, um, but also the, um, if there's a little bit of work that might need to be done, that kind of water, you know, weatherproof that add-on, they're looking at using the old ambulance bay. Um, some of that hopefully will be covered before this fiscal year is over, so we won't have that cost in there. But at the very least, there'll be some power um needs, you know, for that, um, and possibly keeping the internet line active down there. Um, so there's a new, new sheet in this for that building. Um, the airport maintenance, um, that's something that the selectmen had agreed to take on the routine maintenance of the airport property, so the mowing. Um, you know, helping with the, the runway maintenance, you know, we typically only deal with the winter time clearing of snow. Um, and the, last year, again, talking about that, they were presented with a fairly long list of things to take, consider taking on, town taking on for the airport. Um, this seemed like one that it's our property, um, yeah, so that, you know, they have the sole use of it, they being PIA, but um, you know, felt that at least maintain, routine maintenance things are something that we, we could um take on. Um, other things on that list uh included um the possibility of some sort of shelter or shed that they would be able to um store packages in, um, and ideally on a, on a day where it was raining, you know, in the future. If they needed to have one of their employees be in that shed, they'd be big enough to support a person. Um, and the packages, it's like a pickup area, um, that was a concept or an idea they threw at the board. Um, the other ideas um that were presented. Um, I mean, the big one was this kind of subsidy from the island to the company, um, to help make, to help guarantee guarantee, they kind of presented it as a, um, I forget what they called it. Um, guarantee, you know, they wanted to see if there was a way to guarantee a certain price point of flight, in that the town could entertain kind of buying a flight um at any frequency, whether it was once a day, or twice a day, or once a week. Um, that would provide them with a little steady ink, you know, a certain amount of income, it would guarantee that we would have a certain flight. Um, North Haven had a similar proposal, um, the dollar amount, you know, presented to the town was, I think in the ballpark of a hundred and fifty thousand for the year. Um, do you imagine that was well outside of the, the budget process and not, not a dollar amount that was anywhere near possible to even consider at the time? Um, I did not include that in here, um, there hasn't been continued pressure or, or desire um from the community following those meetings to see something like that put in place, so I didn't include that. Um, they did talk about the extension of the runway, that's been on the agenda or radar for, Christ, over two years now, I think. Um, Kevin presented that to us a few years ago. Um, challenge of that, of course, is money, um, you know, and trying to find funds for that. Uh, we talked about considering using the Mary Talbot um funds, which had been utilized before for some work up there. Um, it's a possibility that that could take care of some of that. Um, you know, we can seek some grant funding, um, with grant funding probably comes a few more standards that, um, you know, would require, um, you know, this is one of those projects that through PIA and, and others, we, we just assumed we could add, just add good material and build it like a gravel road, um, without any engineers, um, you know, deal with the wet areas um for drainage and, and just continue extending that. There are property lines, some property ownership challenges we'd have to navigate, um, it would cross um, two properties, um, go through one and end in the middle of another one. Um, the, the physical runway extension, so that's something that has to be, um, explored with those property owners further. Um, one of them did give us a, sent a letter to the board uh with kind of a proposal um, or make us an offer, here, here's the things that we'd, we'd want considered um as restrictions. Um, you know, so we haven't, it hasn't been on the top of the radar as of late because of the need for the potential survey and the cost associated with having to do any of that, and not having the budget this year to support that with the unexpected legal fees we've had and other issues. Um, that is on the radar to try and do for them, and That is on the radar to try and do for them, um, that again, came out of, um, a couple the air airplanes they'd gotten in the last few years are a little bit bigger, which is great, because they can carry, I think, two more people. Um, it's a lot better for medical evacuations, um, but they are a little heavier. Um, so the difference of two to three hundred feet would be huge for them, especially in the winter time. Um, the old fire hall, continued maintenance needed on that, um, last year's budget, or this year's budget, rather, we um, you'd agreed to and was supported for some touch-up painting, um, that also didn't happen last spring and summer um, due to the same contractor, not having done work out here, um, we have reached out to a couple of other folks to look at that for us. Um, so even, even if we were able to get to that this spring, um, there's still going to be some continued work, the the railings, um, on the side there for the public bathroom are rotting in places and should be replaced. Um, there's a couple of broken windows, um. The, the door handles on there, on any of the main doors, um, for upstairs, as well as the bathroom, need, should be replaced. The half the keys we have for it don't seem to want to work most of the time. Um, you know, so there's just some minimal things that need to be taken care of, um, so other than that, in this in this section of the bu- budget book anyways, there's, I think that accounts for most of the, the changes. Little bit of offsetting revenue for this, the, the pilot payments, the payment and move taxes, that um, traditionally, that goes, that goes and supports the Parks Commission budget, the last couple of years, we've had a town warrant that would return any unspent funds out of that park commission or pilot payment, um, to a Parks Reserve, um, to support the work that they do. Um, and then the rental income from the, um, the old fire hall between the animal hospital and um, Chris Clark. Any questions about any of those?
Uh, Andy, i- is part of your job description, the building investigator and contractor for this in the Washington School, I, I remember we talked about this last year.
Yeah, I don't have anyone else on staff that it's in theirs, so yes. Which, yes, presents sometimes the challenge to be able to get it off, get it, um, and keep it at the top of the list.
We, well, yeah, I think it's, I think it, it is a challenge, because buildings require a lot of thought and observation, et cetera, so anyway, okay, thank you.
I know.
Andy.
Yep.
Uh, the Indian Creek lease, what's that, uh? Increase to eight thousand, what is that?
Uh, eight thousand this year, the increase was to fix the stairs. The work that Chris Koloski and, um, I think Luke had done last summer, they replaced the the, the failing metal stairs on the creek, on the Earl Hamilton side and put that granite block in.
Right, okay, thanks.
The thoroughfare lease site, you'll notice, um, I should have put that in the, in the first page there. Um, substantial jump there, but that's the, the, um, to cover the cost of an additional float. Um, that's something that's been brought, um, forward to the board a few times now, um. Most of you probably know how busy that is in the summertime up there. Um, you know, I think for one year, we had an additional float up there, um, and it didn't survive the second winter, so it only was only used for one year, um, last year, it was over, overcrowded up there. People were ti- are tying on to the handrails that we've put in, um. You know, and that's not ideal, um, you know, there really needs to be another flow, at least seasonally up there. Um, so the consideration of funding for that.
Andy. Also repair of the, of the ramp?
It doesn't include repair of the boat launch, is that what you mean, the boat launch?
Launch, yeah, yes.
Doesn't, it doesn't include, it doesn't include that, my thought was um, I feel pretty comfortable in suggesting that we, we consider doing that using the TIF funds that we have. The town retains ten percent of the taxed value on the turbines. Um, and that's a little over a hundred thousand dollars in that fund. Um, so the thought would be that that is a piece of infrastructure that supports the equipment in, in adjacent to the project area of the TIF, um, that we could use those funds to help improve that.
Is the cost of the new float, has that been, are we trying to share that cost with North Haven, or is this solely being taken on by Vinal Even?
Um, as far as I know, the gentleman's agreement between the two islands still stands, um, I believe we pay seventy percent of the maintenance and costs on, on, of that infrastructure, the, the float, I mean, I'm not aware that they cover anything on the boat launch, but the float and ramp that's there for pedestrian or for boaters, um, but they would pay thirty percent, that's my understanding.
Why, why is it thirty percent? Why isn't it fifty fifty?
Um, I don't know, it goes back quite a few years.
But I would like us to revisit that, though, let's just put that on the agenda for some other time.
As far as I know, we don't contribute anything for the floats on the other side of the thoroughfare, but, um, just throwing that out there.
Okay, thank you for that piece of information, I did not know that.
Any other, um, questions on, or comments, or things I can get back to you on for any of this? All right. Insurance, um, we've got a goal to try, uh, to see the workers' comp liability decrease, that took a huge increase, uh, over the last couple of years due to some injuries. Um, and so there's a desire to see that we enrolled as a voluntary SHAPE program. Um, I don't recall the, what the acronym stands for, but Maine Department of Labor has this program that we could pursue. Um, again, it's voluntary, if, if we're able to gain full compliance with that program, um, we receive I'll say a pass, but, um, kind of a grace period for, um, the inspection process, um. You know, kind of proving that every employee is fully updated on all the training requirements. All the departments have the applicable policies in place, um, the reviewed, whatever period of time to be reviewed you know, by the employees, um, it's a pretty heavy lift to get there, but the ability to, I mean, seeing, seeing the increase in that workers' comp liability over the last few years, I mean, and acknowledging that there's obviously some shortfalls in, in policies and practices, um, you know, that's a pretty important, uh, one to stay on top of, um. In something that, you know, should warrant, you know, put some time to, um, so the proposal is to be able to put, and it's, it's something that's been on Mark's radar and in Gold's list for at least two years now, if not, maybe three. Um, so at some point, you know, this is the whole thing about time and kind of identifying where we spend time doing certain things, and I told him, I said, you know, I, if, if this is something that we, you know, we, between he and I, really think we should be looking to aim to do. And it's been on a list now for a couple of years, and we haven't had any chance to get to it, you know, do we just put it in there as like this project position and, and just kind of hire someone to be, kind of coordinate that? And work with the departments to, to get things up to date, um, and so there's a small amount there to try and help cover the cost of someone to come in and work with us on that. Um, you know, in our minds, it would be a pretty good winter project for, you know, someone who's already familiar with our work, if there's someone on the fire department, for example, um, or another employee that's worked with us, um, you know, that would be able to help, help work through that, um, that's kind of the hope with that one. Um, with that, I, I am anticipating the workers' comp to decrease, um, I think we hit the peak. Hopefully hit the peak with that this current fiscal year, um, and start to see some of its decline. Um, because of that, in, in large part because of that one, um, you know, there's been a little bit of, um the contingency that we had on last year's budget, not knowing, because we don't know right now what fiscal year, what calendar year twenty-two premiums will be, so we kind of have to guess at that. Um, based on where we know it's gone, um, you know, so I did, did decrease that a little bit, an increase on the general insurance line largely accounting for, um, uh, new build, the Public Works Garage, addition of a new building. Um, with much more value, um, given that it's got a lot more to, a lot more to offer, it's a lot better condition, um, than what we've been in. There were also adjustments, uh, we won't see it on this one, but adjustments to the work, to the, uh, general insurance, as they did a more thorough review of our wastewater department. Um, it's something that they do probably every three years, I think it is, um, and so that, that, that happened this this past year, and so some of that increases included, um, in that work they've done generally. Um, the airport policy, we didn't see an increase in that last year. That premium, I think, just came up recently, um, and I think it stayed the same. Um, you know, so that's fortunate, hopefully, you know, the two thousand won't be that much of an increase next year. Um. And then that service fee is that, that position, or someone to be able to work with us, um, on that SHAPE program. Any questions on the insurance piece?
Andy, what's the service fees, the twenty-five hundred?
That's the, the money that, uh, we could use to hire someone to help shepherd us through the SHAPE program.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
All right, um. I think there's a few more, do folks want to take another quick five-minute break?
Yes, please.
All right, I think there's probably four or five more, um, so we'll just take a five-minute break and, and be able to get through those. All right, hopefully, folks, got a chance to stretch a little bit. Um. Picking up on a relatively straightforward one, this one, the social security and Medicare tax, you know, amounts there, the, the tax on wages. Um, again, directly correlated to what our payroll is, um. It's been slightly overestimated the last few years, which, you know, there could be a, a big chunk there, uh, with public works and potential you know, unused overtime or winter work, um, that we put in there, um, I try and take that just as a sum. The ambulance payroll is also one that's high, you know, estimated based on, is everyone signing up for all the crew time available and assuming a certain amount of runs, and so there's a little bit of, um. You know, not all of it's been spent in a large part, I think, because of some of those, those particular ones, um. But is there any questions, I mean, again, pretty straightforward, taxes paid on the payrolls, any questions on this? License and septicage, um, price hasn't changed surprisingly, I'm not like a lot of other annual things. Um, this price has stayed twenty-three hundred a year. This price has stayed twenty-three hundred a year. I have no indication that that's changing. That's the, again, the fee to have a licensed discharge site for the wastewater. General assistance, proposing the same amount again, three thousand dollars. That's what we've had the last few years. You can see in the last few years collectively, we've only spent, we spent less than two thousand dollars, nothing year-to-date this year. Again, by law, we have to have it. It's one of the very few expended, or lines that we can over, over expend without prior approval. You know, but the last few years there hasn't been, hasn't been much use of it. It's a very, probably no, very strict income requirement to be able to meet this. I think this year, the single person that apply, if a single person's applying for assistance, they need to prove they make less than, I think, seven hundred and sixty dollars or so a month. So it's a pretty relatively low threshold on the, on that end. And most people are usually able to, you know, with the nature of the workout, you're able to get back to work pretty quickly. And if folks are on a long-term thing, there's other programs they should be applying for that we try and help them get to. So any questions on GA program or the funding? Cemeteries. This one here is about the same, down just fifty dollars. It's taking a little bit out of the supplies. The service fee is up just slightly. There's not, only the fund balance is the offsetting revenue. Any revenue from plot or lot sales goes right to the trust fund. You know, so there's no, there's no money right now that comes to support the annual operating expense. Most of it being the mowing. Matt, as I mentioned before, going to be working with, you know, we had, had some money in there this current year to support and, and provide some funding to the Historical Society. And the plan is to work with them on the database they've been creating for the cemetery plots to try and digitize that. So it's again, one of the projects Matt will be working on this spring. Recognizing the work they've already done in accessing that to populate the digital database. Something that will contribute, acknowledging their time, presumably need to do that again next year. So that, there's some money in there carried forward for that. Any questions on cemeteries? I know some of the board members, select board members had questions about fees and what, what's, what do we charge? You know, how does it work when someone does buy a lot? What's the proof of ownership? So some of those things need to be at least reviewed and, and likely improved going forward. Was there any other questions on cemetery stuff? All right, donations. Got most, mostly the same. I, I realize I didn't copy those yet and provide those, so I'll do that either tomorrow or Wednesday and, and send those in an email to you. I know that was helpful for some last year to be able to see exactly what, what they had written and were asking for. So carried the same amounts. I think in most circumstances, the, the board had rounded up on, on some of these acknowledging the potential impacts of COVID might have on those organizations and the good work they do for residents of Vinyl Haven. Most of them are far below the dollar value those services provide to the residents that do use them. Any general questions on donations?
Andy, you know, the surplus food, was that adequate for this year or how are needs met for surplus food?
As far as I know, they haven't utilized any of our funding yet for this year. My understanding and checking in with them throughout the COVID response has been that they've got great support in the last couple of years and have been flush with food. In the past, we've only funded their boat tickets and priorities. Like I said, and I think they've even got that set up already on their own for this past year so far. So it's, it's there to help support them and they've been fortunate to get a lot of other support as well.
Thank you.
Andy, what is, what is this, the, the agency that handles the surplus food?
What do they call themselves? The Brown Door? It's out of the Union Church. I think they call it the Brown Door now or something like that.
Oh. Okay.
That program Betsy was running with Candy and now I think Holly and Betsy or Holly and Candy are in charge of it. All right. I think that gets us to the end of what I was hoping to get through today. Are there any? Any? Any questions on what we covered or what we're going to do going forward? Do you like the format? Do you want to continue to see how that goes? So again, plenty of time still to get to go through this. I know as we started, started this and I apologize again for getting the books out so late from what I set out to do, you know, but we do have a little bit of time in April to be able to work into April a little bit to make up for it. The next meeting, I put in the email there, be Wednesday at four. And you should have in there, but we're going over law enforcement, fire, ambulance, public safety, harbor master, CEO, animal control, and hopefully library.
Yep.
Perfect.
Good.
All right.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
If you want to adjourn your selectmen's meeting.
Second. Yay.
Yay.
All right. That closes the meeting. Thanks, all.
Thanks, everybody.